And yet, we have people for like, okay, so we're gonna preach hate too. But then we're also going to encourage people to look up and study books. This is a book I read, recommended by a local pastor. The book is called The Sexual Holocaust. And in the book, they link together the decline of the modern world with LGBTQ people, incest, vassality, and get this, the icing on the cake, human robot sex. All of those things apparently are linked together to the decline of the whole entire world. This is a legitimate book that someone wrote. And that people in town, pastors, multiple pastors in town are actively advocating people to read this book.
Hi, my name's Leo W T and you have found your way to the Conversations Podcast. Conversations exists to create spiritually minded conversations about life. We desire to create safe space for dialogue and community. We desire to come together regularly and intentionally to generate conversations about life, belief, and the intersection of the two. Everyone is welcome at the conversation.
There's a lot going on in the world regarding transgender people, regarding school boards, and regarding the use of religion to propagate hate speech, honestly. So I wanted to just chat a little bit, like there's a bunch of, I could say like eighty-five things on this topic. But um, I really wanted to just vibe out and get some folks' thoughts and everything, but uh, you know. I don't know, the algorithm is weird because I can't uh, because I can't post straight to Facebook, which is annoying, so. Seven people, oh my goodness. If you have questions or thoughts as I'm speaking, let me know for sure. I'm gonna monitor the feed here, but there's been a lot of discourse lately, societally and locally about transgender people. Particularly with gender identity bills being brought forth, at least in New York State schools. A lot of people are just raising all sorts of ridiculous commentary on trans people, right? Like that's happening right now. And the United States has a history of encoding in its legislature clauses that dehumanize people. The United States has a history of doing that. The foundational document of the United States has a racial racist language encoded into it, where we're referring to African Americans as three-fifths of people, and we're referring to Native Americans as merciless savages. And we've never tried to rectify the Native American part. And we've never tried to offer reparations to African American people. So like the, the United States is really pumped just stripping away people's humanity, left and right. Women, you know, black people, native people, Japanese people, trans people, like queer people, all of these things. The United States has encoded language and, and methods of keeping people oppressed. And that's been the whole history of our country, like that's the heritage of America. And then you add into the mix evangelicalism, which didn't start until America. You add into the mix Christian nationalism, you add into the mix American exceptionalism, and then you add into the mix people who are blatantly untrained in theology or trying to manipulate said theology to justify political ideas and hatred. And it's really too much at this point, it's really too much. If I'm watching a video and you have to say the word hate more than like eighteen times, I think you're compensating. I think what you're doing is absolutely trying to whip people into a frenzy. And you, a lot of people do that and they'll use their position as a religious leader intentionally to do that. And it's honestly ungodly and it's unbiblical, period, that's all there is to it. Now, I'm not here to say that transgender people need a biblical apologetic to exist. When I say apologetic, I mean it's a reason to exist, right? I don't think transgender need a biblical, transgender people need a biblical reason to exist, because guess what, we just exist, right? Like, and I talked to the higher ups today, you know, within the transgender organization. And I have permission to just, you know, share, to share my, some information about our agenda, right? This is the first time this is coming out in the public eye, but um, I was given permission to share the transgender agenda. And I'd just like to let you guys know, it's actually, it's pretty, it's pretty succinct. The whole transgender agenda is to fucking survive. That's it. Literally to survive in a world that is hell-bent on disavowing us from the population. It's wild, really, actually, because transgender people have existed since the earliest points in history. Transgender people were actually considered sacred by lots of indigenous religions and by Christianity and Judaism in the original context. The Bible itself speaks about transgender people being specifically called and specifically made for roles within the new heaven and the new earth, i.e. the kingdom of God, i.e. making earth a better place, right? Actually, the first person that was baptized in the Bible was a queer black person. A queer black person was the first person baptized after Jesus' death. You can take that to the bank, that's Acts, chapter two, Philip and the Ethiopian eunuch. And if you look a little bit further back in the Old Testament, you can see a verse in Isaiah that's actually a specific prayer linking together the immigrant and the queer person. It's a prayer of blessing, because both immigrants and queer people were considered to be holy and valid and needed in the world. So you gotta ask yourself if any person is preaching against queer people, trans people, or immigrants, or immigration, or immigration policy. If you're preaching against those things, you're actually preaching against the Bible, right? And I don't believe that you have to believe in the Bible for transgender people to be valid, but if you're not using the Bible, you're honestly just admitting that you have nothing to cling to other than your bare hatred of people who are different than you. And if you are trying to use the Bible, well, step up, step up your game, because it's weak sauce right now. Weak sauce. Not even Judaism agrees with you, and Judaism, like that's the paper that Christianity copied off of, right? Transgender people don't need anyone else's excuses to exist, but. I didn't get any baked goods, Emily, I'm so sorry. I just got this permission to share our agenda. And you know, there you go. It, it, it might be honestly eugenics that these laws are coming from. It's like we're creating this society that where we think what should go, goes. And there are preachers in our local town who are content to get online, to use their church's platform, not even their own name, just their church's platform, and to whip people into a hateful frenzy, saying the words hate and destroy and war and transgenders are evil and our community is dangerous. Well, let me hit you with some quick facts, my friends, let me hit you with some quick facts, alright? Here you go. Here you go. Anglo-Saxon theory thrives on racism, you're definitely, definitely correct. So let me hit you with some quick facts about trans folks, actually. There's a study from Sweden that followed a group of trans people as they transitioned. And it turns out that their crimin, at level of criminality is absolutely on par, completely dead even the same as people who are cisgender. So what that means is transgender people experience or commit acts of criminality on the exact same statistical frequency as cisgender people. So no, trans people aren't scary or evil. If you're saying that, it's because you're hateful and you're using some sort of ancient book and some sort of warped translation or manipulation to try and make your claim be biblical and it's not biblical, it's actually unfettered hatred. It's unfettered hatred. So we've seen that transgender people commit acts of criminality at the exact same ratio as cisgender people. But let's take this one step further, huh? Oh, transgender people are four times more likely to be the target of violence than their cisgender community members. Four times more likely. Really? The transgender community is what you're afraid of? I don't think you're afraid of that, I think you just hate us. And if you're gonna say you hate us, just say you hate us, because your words aren't confusing anybody anymore, right? Yeah, exactly. That's what I'm saying. Transgender people are four times more likely to be the target of violence than they are, than their cisgender components, and they commit acts of criminality along these same lines as their cisgender component, eh, community members. There's no scientific reason to dislike transgender people. There's no biblical reason to dislike transgender people. The only reason that people dislike transgender people and purport those sort of ideas is for a political ideology. You know what's really easy to do? Get people to vote against someone they hate. That's pretty, it's pretty easy. It's pretty easy to manipulate somebody using hatred, but that's not religion. That's manipulation and it's a political strategy. It's what political figureheads do. Religion and faith is nothing to do with hating transgender people. Your agenda is exposed completely, and it's hatred. And it's not even thinly veiled. If you're preaching against transgender people, first of all, get your hands on the church calendar, because the church at large, over seventy percent of the global church, uses the Book of Common Prayer and the lectionary to structure their church, their church services. So stop preaching about stuff that's not even in the lectionary in the Book of Common Prayer and the regular church calendar. You're freelancing, you're making it up on your own, period. And it's not necessarily even needed that the church ever discussed trans people, because it's just an opinion piece of specific people designed to garner fear and hatred so as to wield political power and to take in money to organizations. That's all there is to it. That's all there is to it. And for people who are really worried about school boards and they're really worried about students going to the bathroom, you know what's interesting? There are a whole lot of people thinking about the genitals of high school students. There are a whole lot of people wanting to lift up every skirt of every girl that goes into the bathroom to see if they approve of your genital configuration or not. That's a fact. I'm not, I, I as a trans person, I'm not the one sitting there thinking about teenagers' genitals. That's the people who are worried about lifting up the skirts before you go into the bathroom. Let's talk about who's got a priority issue here. Because when I go to the bathroom, three things are gonna happen. I'm gonna pee, I'm gonna wash my hands, I'm gonna leave. Period. Period. And if you wanna talk about biological males and biological females, the truth is, is you don't actually know someone's gender a hundred, or someone's biological sex a hundred percent certainly, until you take a chromosomal test. So are you trying to have everybody take a chromosomal test that costs like exorbitant amounts of money? To just make sure that their genitals look like what you think they should look like? Whoa. Who's thinking about kids' genitals now? Oh wait, people who are anti-trans. Period. This is why comprehensive sex education needs to exist in school. We need actual information and not miseducation. And yet, we have people for like, okay, so we're gonna preach hate too. But then we're also going to encourage people to look up and study books. This is a book I read, recommended by a local pastor. The book is called The Sexual Holocaust. And in the book, they link together the decline of the modern world with LGBTQ people, incest, vassality, and get this, the icing on the cake, human robot sex. All of those things apparently are linked together to the decline of the whole entire world. This is a legitimate book that someone wrote. And that people in town, pastors, multiple pastors in town are actively advocating people to read this book. It is horrifying and so incredibly ignorant and misguided. There are facts in there that people are trying to use this fact to prove that cohabitation is evil and it leads to moral decline, when the number that they polled, the statistic that they polled was from a study that shows the benefits of cohabitation. This is a book that pastors, local pastors are actively encouraging people to read, saying that LGBTQ people are literally bringing about the demise of the whole world, which is a total load of shit. You know what's bringing about the demise of the whole world? Hatred and preaching it. And masquerading as a religious professional when all you're doing is being a political figurehead with piss poor theology that's trying to garner votes and money in your offering plate. Fear is a great motivator, but you know what it's not okay for? Public policy. Period. Our public policy is driven by humanity, not your fear of someone who's different than you. And you don't get to hide behind your religious book to say that, because I sit behind that same book and study that same book, and you're dead ass wrong. Dead ass wrong. If you wanna meet in the middle, we could have a conversation, but right now, you're actually just dead ass wrong. Period. Period. It's wild to me. Thank you for dropping that video, thank you for dropping that video. This is the video link uh, from the author of this book. And if you want the book, it's zero dollars and zero cents. I have a copy of it on my computer right now, because I'm morbidly curious. And I have some, there's some amazing quotes in there, maybe I'll make a whole video about that at some point. Maybe I'll make a whole video about that at some point. But the point is, this stuff, this actively divisive, hate inducing, theologically bankrupt and anti-biblical thinking is being pushed out of pulpits to control political agendas. In the Bible, it says, give to Caesar what is Caesar's and give to God what is God's. Separate that shit. Churches say it, there's a wall there, like my religion can inform how I vote, but it is never okay to use religion as a club to beat people over the head. And if you're gonna do that, you better damn well stop using a sign that says cross equals love. Because cross equals manipulation in that, in that scheme of thinking. You know what's love? I don't know, actually just loving people. It's weird, you shouldn't have to go through these mental hula hoops to prove that you love and care about your fellow human. You should be actually doing it. Wild. Stigma, shame, and fear mongering are the absolute forces that these types of churches and organizations are using to galvanize political votes. It's always been about votes. Up until the nineteen seventies, the church, the Catholic Church and the evangelical church, and one of the most conservative sects of the evangelical church, the SBC or Southern Baptist Convention, you know, the people that don't believe in critical race theory? They actually believed that Roe versus Wade was God ordained. The church until the nineteen seventies believed that abortion was fine. And then Ronald Reagan was like, political strategy? Political strategy, right? So guess what? We hate, and we push fear, and we push ignorance, and we divide, and we separate. But we call it love. We call it love, because we really just care about these people deep down. Newsflash, you shouldn't have to look under the surface to decide if an action is loving or not. If an action is loving, it will feel loving. I'm tired of people talking left, right, and all the way around an issue, and using their opinion and pushing it off as religious fact. It's not, it's dogma and it's indoctrination, and it's what cult leaders do. I don't know how many more times I can say this, but there is no biblical proof for homophobia. There is no biblical proof for anti-transgender attitudes. It is solely personal opinion, conjecture, and outright fear and hatred. And when you purport to connect the Bible to homophobia and transphobia, you are committing a sin. Literally, a sin means doing what is not most loving, doing what God would not want. That's what you're doing when you try to weaponize an ancient scripture against a people that have existed since the beginning of time. And in the beginning of time, we were the ones in the temple, like that was us, homie. Literally. If you're worried, if you're worried about gender identity policies, right? Open your eyes, because they started being passed two years ago. You fell asleep with the whole wheel if you missed that, but guess what's happened since then? I don't know, nothing, because people are just peeing in the bathroom. The attempt to use this as a conversation piece now is nothing more than fear mongering and hatred. And unfortunately, it's become, it's become a very effective weapon from the right and alt-right and ultra-conservatives. I'm not saying the left, the left doesn't use it as times, but I'm saying it's a political strategy and it's not a theological truth. So we're just gonna unmask that right now, because the Bible does not says, does not say it's not okay to be gay. The Bible does not say, the Bible says even less about being trans than it does about being gay. And the Bible doesn't actually say anything about being actually gay. Says anything about, says things about non-consensual relationships and things that are not equitable and things that are unequitable distributions of power. You wanna talk about what's an unequitable distribution of power? When someone comes into an office of power over a group of people and then uses that office to perpetuate their opinion as opposed to fact, science, or theological truth? That is an abuse of power. That is a problem. Like, let's just clear that up. There's no more thinly veiled, like this is an outright hate mongering, fear mongering, political decision. And honestly, there's not much hope of reaching anybody who's gonna listen to that. It's a cult. It's a cult, and it's not, it's not actually Christianity. Christianity itself done a lot of bad things. Religion as an institution caused a lot of harm. I'm not here to apologize for any of those things. Christianity owes so much to indigenous people around the world. Christianity, it was not even, it was not even, what Jesus practiced was not Christianity. Christianity is its own beast. I'm not apologizing for Christianity. But what I am saying is you can't use Christianity as a weapon against the LGBTQ community, because it's not there. You're using your opinion and you're reading your opinion onto an ancient text, but you're not reading the text from the time. Get out of here. That is, that is just intellectually dishonest. Intellectually dishonest. Wild. Theologically, it is bankrupt for people to try and say that transgender people and LGBTQ people are not anything less than holy. Bankrupt. So that leaves us with a political opinion, right? Because these are the two forces at play, politics and religion. These are the two forces that people are trying to bring to bear on school boards right now. They're trying to bring to bear to stop the creation of a safer and more equitable environment. I don't know who on earth is literally troubled by the phrase, protect our students, respect our teachers, but I've heard people actually say, that's a harmful phrase. It's harmful for us to say that we need to protect our students, respect our speakers. Whoa. What the mental hula hoops, fat man? We are to protect all of our children. Period. And the myth of the transgender super predator in the bathroom is actually a fiction created by the right and the alt-right to try to galvanize a voting block around fear and hatred. Guess what? That's an agenda if I've ever heard one. So we've dispensed with a theological discussion coming to bear on our school boards, because theology doesn't belong in the school board. If you think it should, you need to get out of the public school system, because that's not what we're about. Public means all of us, equitable. So let's talk about the political agenda. Oh wait, it's a political agenda that you're trying to insert onto teenagers' genitals. I can't say this enough, but it seems like someone is really thinking about looking underskirts in the bathroom. And guess what? It's not trans people, it's not queer people. Honestly, it's probably not even your kids, because like the kids are pretty much alright. Kids don't hate unless they're taught to. That's a fact. Kids don't hate unless they're taught to. But there's a section of people in this world that are really concerned with the anatomy of teens and kids. I don't know how, how much more clear I can make that. But let's revisit the fact that transgender people commit acts of criminality on the same statistical frequency that cisgender people do. And transgender people are four times more likely to be the victim of violent crime than cisgender people. So really, uh, we had someone named Mary stand up at the school board meeting this week and literally say that we need to protect the straights, we need to protect the majority. Like what? As if the whole system wasn't already wired for rich white people like yourself, Mary? Then you cite a case that's not even about transgender people? Get out of here. Get out of here. Hatred and social, political agendas coming to bear on where our children go to the bathroom. Point blank and period. Point blank and period. And there's no point in talking to someone with these sort of opinions, because they're not gonna change. There's no point in breaking the line and crossing the line and talking to someone with this opinion, because they're not gonna change. Ten out of ten believe that people will see this video and then go back and double down even more on their hatred, because it's predictable. It is predictable. But guess what happens? When you say things that are dangerous from a public platform, you become responsible for the effects that you cause. And you know what, what is one of the greatest ways to create a homegrown domestic terrorist? Convince them they're doing the Lord's will. When you speak in public as a leader, you are morally obligated to take responsibility for the worst actions of the person who hears your speech. If you're gonna say death is victory, and then you're also gonna preach that transgender people don't have value as human beings, that they're evil, you're responsible for the violence that occurs when one of your congregation members commits an act of violence against an LGBTQ person. You incited that. Not that I'm shocked by movements that are already fueled by hatred. We're just calling a spade a spade. Let's call on a spade a spade. Transgender people are not violent super predators. The biggest transgender agenda, which I got permission to share from our higher ups, is just to live, to survive in a world where people actively preach hatred. Yep. It's also recap that transgender people do not commit any more crime than people who are cisgender. And in fact, are four times more likely, four hundred percent more likely, to be the victim of said crime. Let's also recap the fact that political opinion and scriptural misinterpretation is like an actual wrong. And using that to fuel hatred, it's not a thinly veiled effect to whip up people, is reality. So what's at play and what's coming to bear on our school boards? Because what should be coming to bear on our school boards is a love for kids and a desire to build community. And a desire to integrate and to recognize diversity and be strengthened from it. What's actually happening? Whole lot of hatred. I'm not saying in our school boards, I'm just saying in general, a whole lot of hatred is coming to bear. Gender identity policy is no more threatening to your cisgender children than just having men in schools. Having male-bodied people in schools makes your child as at risk of being sexually assaulted as having a transgender person in your schools. And if anyone can see anybody in the bathroom, that's a whole nother problem. That's a whole nother problem. I don't know, what do you guys think? What do you folks think? Talk to me. Oh yeah, transgender people are under the control of Satan. I don't know how many ways to say that's just a blatant lie. Newsflash, I've actually been in the process of working towards ordination for sixteen years. So yes, pursuing theological education for a decade and a half right now, sixteen whole entire years. Can speak with a lot of confidence and expertise on this topic. Yep. Ha, you're not in, you're not in the club, Emily, but yeah, bodily autonomy and healthcare, always, yeah. Oh man, don't even be started about healthcare, access to healthcare for all people, whoa. Well, I mean, if you're not a person, it's easy to take your healthcare away, right? You're not, the woman doesn't matter, women's, the already living people don't matter. Isn't it funny how the, the unborn are like the most convenient group of people to advocate for? Because they don't make any demands of you? But once they're born, don't let them cross that border, we're putting them in a cage. No food. Don't give them any free food, because that would be socialism. Definitely don't give them healthcare, because no, no, but just get born. Never thinking about the actual person that is alive and sentient experiencing that. It's ridiculous. This is what we're doing in America, though. In America, we're categorically dehumanizing people so that we can take away their rights, because that empties up a line item on a budget. That, my friends, is how capitalism functions. My life and my ability to self-actualize and just exist is a line item on a conservative budget that they'd rather delete. I have plenty of friends who are conservatives, because you can be fiscally conservative and also not a jackass. But the way things are going in the world right now is just a giant misdirection. It's fear mongering and it's hate speech. And it's not even veiled anymore. And it doesn't matter how much you hide behind a cross to do it, it's still the same thing. It's still the same thing. Until you can have a real theological conversation and understand the fact that at... that at best-case scenario, at best-case scenario, you can say that maybe trans people exist, until you can come to that middle ground? Nah, we're not even playing. Also, watch out for public leaders who intentionally misgender people in real life, cuz that pretty much signals their intent and the quality of their character. We don't look at people that are married and say they're maiden name just cuz we don't believe it, we don't like it, whatever. No, you respect the person by calling them their name. You press, you respect the person by referring to them how they want to be referred to. Not what you fucking think is in my pants. Your agenda is exposed, and your, your level of character is exposed when you intentionally misgender people. And it's even more exposed when you do that in a way that can and does incite the majority of violent terror acts on American soil are perpetuated by white Christian men with guns, bro. So when you intentionally misgender someone in an audience that is likely to harbor that next person, you're absolutely culpable in creating a violent atmosphere. There is plenty of room in the public sphere to discuss diversity. How we handle it, what it means for our, just, our society, um, how it impacts our world. There's no room in the public, in the public sphere for hate mongering, masquerading as religion with an attempt to create a homogeneous culture. That's social eugenics. That is racism, that is transphobia, that is homophobia, which is misnamed cuz it's not a phobia. You're not, you're just hateful. There's no room for that in a vibrant, flourishing community that we're trying to build. So get on board or get out the way. Cuz we're all about bodily autonomy, validating of human beings, and celebrating diversity and moving forward together as a community. If your message is anything other than that? Sorry, but you're blatantly working against that. That's anti-biblical, that's anti-Christ. It's anti-Christ. It's anti-the life of Christ. Anti-Christ. Yep, we got there. Yep. I do think that sex education is incredibly important. Uh, it's incredibly important in our schools. Uh, people wanna say that, um, you know, we shouldn't be talking about this, or it should be for the parents to decide, or this, or that, or the other. Well, if you haven't talked to your ten or twelve-year-old about like healthy relationships and appropriate boundaries physically? You missed the boat, cuz someone has at that point. And I would think that responsible sex education and health education would be something that we would want for everybody, cuz that creates a safe community. Because if you don't provide that, guess what it creates? It creates a public health crisis. It doesn't create moral fortitude, it creates a public health crisis. Alright, my friends, my blood pressure's up. I think I've said what I need to say. I appreciate your participation. Please share this video, because there's so many, so many people out there spewing misinformation with an intent to confuse or intentional disinformation with an intent to control and manipulate. And like, is 2022, we ain't got time for that? We're trying to make this world a better place? Get in, loser, we're making the world a better place. We're not making it more hateful. And we also don't have to homogenize to make it a better place. Have a good day, everybody. Bye.
This has been the Conversations Podcast. Thank you so much for joining. If you have any questions or comments or just wanna get involved, feel free to join the conversation on social media. You can find us at conversationsofficial on Facebook, Instagram, and YouTube. And please don't forget to rate, follow, and share this podcast. We're available on Anchor, Spotify, or wherever you get your podcasts. Thank you so much for joining the conversation.